Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our Board Meetings webpage as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta así como en la descripción a continuación.
It is Tuesday, July 19th, and this is the Ross Valley School Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. It is 6:08 PM, and I am calling our meeting to order this evening. We are starting our meeting in closed session, and we have two items tonight on a closed session. One is the public employee evaluation for the superintendent, and the second is conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation government code section 54956.9E1. And we will now move into our closed session. All right, welcome everybody. It is Tuesday, July 19th. This is the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. It is 7:11 o'clock in the evening. Good to see you all here. So I am officially reconvening us back into open session as I said at 7:11. Hold on a second. We are, are we doing this now? Okay. We are, welcome everyone. Sorry, I'm gonna let them do this while it's beeping. So welcome again. We are here at the Wade Thomas Multipurpose Room, which in this location, just want to again acknowledge that we are here together tonight on unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present DeMaran and Southern Sonoma Counties, and that we honor with gratitude the land itself that we are on and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emergent. So thank you all for being here tonight with us here on this land as we acknowledge that. Before, so, as is always, we start with a couple of procedural items now that we're reconvened into open session. The first procedural item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and... Yes, sorry. I'm also gonna acknowledge since we are recording, one, I'm acknowledging that we are recording, so for those of you who haven't been here tonight, just to let you know, this is being live broadcast and we are recording it. We are, all of the trustees are here except for one of our trustees, Marie, who is out of town. So as terms of a quorum and the trustees that are here for the people who are listening. Before we say our Pledge of Allegiance, I typically have a land acknowledgement and also a moment where I make some sort of comment reflecting on democracy. This evening, I don't, I don't have a lot to say this evening, other than I believe that us coming together as a community in this public process is a moment of democracy, and I believe that it is something that is on everyone's minds, especially lately. And while I don't have anything to say, I just want to ask everybody for 30 seconds to have their own moment to reflect on being in community with each other and being in a public process with each other. So just 30 seconds for you to have your own reflection on what democracy and community public process means for you. All right. If we could all just take a deep breath on that reflection, and we'll move into the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me? All right. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all." Thank you. The next procedural item is the adoption of the agenda and the time allocations. Do any of my colleagues up here have any questions about the agenda or the time allocations? Hearing none? If there's a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second, if motion in a second. Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
All right. We have an agenda for this evening. As for, the next item on our agenda is communication, and that starts with reporting out from the closed session. We did have two items on our closed session this evening that we discussed, but there were no actions taken, so there's nothing to report out from our closed session. The next item is public comment regarding items that are not on the open session agenda. So this is the public comment period, so if there's anyone here who has a comment on something that's not on this agenda and wants to come up and speak to us on any item that is not on our agenda, this is the moment to do that. We have this in every meeting. I'm not seeing anybody coming up to the podium, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on, close out from that. The next item is board announcements. Are there any board announcements? And these are announcements of anything that you've been involved in since our last board meeting that is related to our work together but is not specific to a committee that you're on? Does anybody have any? Nope, it's summertime, so, great, all right. No board announcements then. And then correspondence and communication to the board. We do have correspondence and communication to the board. All of that is publicly posted on our board docs and board information. So that's, we all read that before we come to these meetings, and it is publicly available for everybody else to read in terms of the communications to the board.
And there have not been any new ones to add since the agenda went live on Friday.
Okay. So the agenda went live on Friday, and there weren't anything, it wasn't anything. After the agenda went live, there were some communications that came to us after the last meeting. Those do get uploaded onto the board docs as well. All right. So now, we are on to the heart of the meeting, which is our presentation and/or action items. Tonight, we have a few discussion and information items, and then we have a couple of items with action to be taken in this section. The first item is the update on the discussions with the Fairfax and Insomma Children's Center on the preferences and options that we directed staff to move forward on at our last meeting. So I'm gonna ask staff for a report, and then we've got a couple of different people who are gonna be talking. And again, just to, just to reiterate with everyone, this is really, it's a, it's a meeting of the board in the public, and so we have some people that we'll be talking with. We've got a staff, we've got attorneys on the phone, and this is for the board to get the information and to do this in the public, and then to hear from the public on their comments, where we will listen to all of the comments. Then we will bring it back to the board for discussion. So the way this is gonna go, as all of our items go, we have presentations. We can ask, we might ask clarifying questions, but we aren't gonna be making any statements of opinions or preferences or anything in the beginning part of it. We are here to listen to the presentation, get clarification. Then we will go out to the public for public comment, because we also want to hear from the public, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion afterwards. So just so you know what the flow's gonna be like for this evening, same as it always is, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate it so everybody knows what to expect. So, that.
So Heidi and Eric and Jessie, do you wanna come on up, since this is the item? And I just wanna be sure, Terry, are you on the phone? Terry? Oh wait, sorry. I turned the volume down. Let me turn it back up. Terry, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, great. And Michael, are you there?
I am.
Okay, wonderful. Do you wanna introduce everyone?
Right, yes. And so I know the trustees have heard the names, but maybe you haven't met all of our guests with us this evening. So we have Eric Schwenninger, who is the director from Fairfax and Insomma Children's Center, Heidi Tomsky, executive director for Children's Center, and Jessie Crossly on the board for the Children's Center. And so we also have on the phone tonight our attorney, Terry Tao, and also the Children's Center's legal counsel, who is Michael Calabrese. We have, as Shelley mentioned at the top, four of the trustees here this evening as well. Alrighty. So tonight's agendized item is to provide an update and have discussion. Only there will be no action, has been agendized to be taken. And the outcome of tonight's item is to ensure that the trustees are caught up and that any questions that they might have, so that if there is no further direction, that'll be provided to staff following this item, that we will continue on having our meetings and continuing, moving on down the pathways for a resolution here. And so before I begin, I'd just like to provide just a context for this evening's meeting, just in case, to keep us all on the same page, and also just in case there's anybody who is tuning in who has not been able to either listen to the live stream meetings before or to the recordings. And so just to note that there has been no action to date taken by the board at all. There's been no notice provided to the Children's Center, and the staff and board of RVSD share the community's love, respect, and value and concern for this wonderful community resource. And we are looking for a resolution so that they continue to thrive and continue on with the great service that they provide to the children of the community. We have been in conversation with the Children's Center since mid-March, when you all presented or asked for lease extension for some upgrades to the site to be able to apply for some grants. And at this point, what we began doing was discovery and information seeking to learn more about, or since we learned that there will be, are likely to be some fire, life, and safety issues with the site. And due to the district exposure to liability, the board established three priorities for the Deer Park site, where the Fairfax and Insomma Children's Center is now located. And these priorities, just to go back and refresh, are facilities upgrades, where the Children's Center would engage in facility improvement designs that are approved by DSA, and funding is secured to bring this facility up to current Field Act standards. Or another pathway would be sale transfer of property, either to the Children's Center itself or to another entity. If it is to another entity, then that will ensure, that entity would ensure that the Children's Center would be able to remain in that location and then undertake whatever needed improvements might need to be made. Or there may be with either of those two pathways, there could be a temporary and/or a potential permanent relocation, and especially temporary in the nature of, if there are any upgrades that need to be made, then they might have to move to a different site while those are occurring. And then to date, the Ross Valley School District Board has had four open public meetings on this topic, May 10th and 31st, and June 14th and 23rd. And then for anybody who is wanting to go back and listen to those, all the meetings are recorded, they're up on the district website, and, and so people could listen to those. And then also, tonight's meeting will be posted within 72 hours following the meeting. And something that we have added to that is some helper text, so that for any person who would like to listen to the recording but English, in a language other than English, they can access the closed captions. That's been available, but we just have put up some helper text, so that's listed on our website, as well as on each recording of the meeting themselves. And we'll continue to keep that helper text there for folks. And then we are in the process, because we've received some feedback and input about potential translation services, and so we're looking into those going forward for the meetings. And although we've been in and continue in information gathering and discovery phase at the board's June 23 special meeting, the board did direct the staff to start engaging with the Children's Center specifically on the pathways, and to come back to tonight's meeting with any updates, and also gave direction to allow staff to identify and work with any other public agencies that might be out there and/or any other sources who might be able to support any of the pathways as we go forward. We have now had, kind of fast-forwarding to, tonight is three meetings with the Children's Center, really appreciate those, that have been in attendance by Eric, Heidi, and Jessie. Some of our meetings just over the time have also included Pete Chambers, who's also from the Children's Center Board, and our legal counsel, as well as Michael Calabrese, their legal counsel, and Chris Carson and myself. Oh, and Shelley, so sorry, and Shelley. And at our most recent meeting, what we decided to do, because it's kind of a tongue-twister to keep referring to ourselves as F-S-A-C-C, RVSD Committee Meetings, is we just collaboratively came up with Deer Park Working Group. So that's, if you hear any of us reference ourselves that way, that's for kind of ease of, it's easier, and we can come up with an acronym too if we wanted to, because you know, education's all full of acronyms. Alrighty, so just again, that a reminder that there will be no action taken tonight, it's just to provide an update. And as I mentioned, we have folks from the Children's Center as well as our legal counsel. The board will engage in listening as well as asking questions. And then as Shelley mentioned, any members of the public who would like to give public comment are able to do so as well. So I think that brings us right up where we are. Heidi, do you wanna start then, or who, is someone gonna?
I think I would.
Put it on? Okay. Thank you. Just in my role, being the director of the Children's Center, I just would like to put out there that childcare is a critical component of the infrastructure of a healthy community and to the well-being of families in need of the service. And our goal, I think that we've all agreed on, is to stand together presenting a solution that keeps Fairfax and Insomma Children's Center in operation, and hopefully at 199 Portis Avenue, Fairfax, California. And then, did you have anything, Jessie? Eric? Then I would turn it over to Mr. Tao and Michael, because I know they have a presentation to make to all of us. So, yeah.
Great.
All right. Well, I, this is Terry Tao. I will dig in really quickly. I will not repeat any of the points that have already been made. We've had a number of meetings dating back to May 23rd, a number of board meetings, and we're pleased that we're all together at this point collaboratively working towards a solution. We have looked at the three options, which are upgrading the facilities, transferring property either to the, to the Children's Center or to another public entity, and the third option being working through some form of relocation, whether to another location or to a district site. So these are the options that we're looking at. We've been discussing them. We are still in the process of working through the process. But with respect to these options, I know Michael, who is the attorney, has been working through them, so I'll turn it over to Michael to talk about where they are.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. And I also wanna thank Terry, as well as Marcy, Shelley, and Chris, and the other folks from the district who've been working with us, you know, very cooperatively in these last several meetings, as has been mentioned. So let me get into the substance of a sort of, our preference from the perspective of the Children's Center from among the options that have been laid out, and I'll explain a little bit of why that is, and then a little bit of what we have been able to do so far to sort of identify what we hope will be a smoothish path. There's always gonna be hiccups here and there, but as smooth a path as possible to the endpoint, which I think we all want, which is the Children's Center stays open, stays where it is, and operates, serves the community, you know, in a safe and effective manner. So the preferred path from among the three is that the property be transferred, and that it be transferred to the Children's Center itself. Now, we have looked at a number of factors that will come into play with this. There's a fairly complex legal scheme for transferring surplus property from a school district to various kinds of entities. But we've identified what we think is a reasonably smooth path here. Mr. Tao and I have discussed this particular path at length, especially over the last couple of days, as we've, as he's mentioned, we've had a number of meetings, and sort of the process of working has, at least for the present moment, focused us on Education Code, section 17458. Now, that's not to say that that's the only available path, but at this point, we are diligencing that section cooperatively, because we believe in all likelihood, it's both the sort of smoothest path in terms of procedural requirements, in terms of the time that would be required to achieve this, in terms of also, you know, possible obstacles along the road, for example, whether a third party might be able to make a claim on the property. All of those things are considerations that we are looking at. But we tentatively believe that section is likely the best, because it is a section in the Education Code that is specifically designed to smooth the path to a district to transfer property to a party that is already what's called a contracting agency. Basically, meaning you already have a contract with somebody to operate the site as a childcare center. So it's more or less custom tailored to what we're doing. Now, it doesn't mean we won't have some, you know, some procedural requirements along the way. For example, you know, there would be a committee that would be set up in the preliminary stages of this, if that's the committee that's commonly referred to as a 7-11 committee. We still needn't want to do that. That's an important mechanism for taking, you know, public input as well as just a legal requirement. So we, what we would be doing, I think, is continuing this process of vetting these legal options. And I think, and I think Terry agrees, we talked about this earlier today, we believe we can have these legal paths vetted quite thoroughly by the next school board meeting, so that we would be able to come in and then say, okay, you know, we're very confident this is the right path, this is the timeline that that path would require. And I can talk about that timeline a little bit right now, but it would be pretty tentative at this stage. I think Terry, earlier today, you used the term half-baked with me today. I hope we're a little more than half-baked. We're not completely done. But we would be looking toward, you know, forming that 7-11 committee if we take this path. That committee's gotta hold a number of hearings, you know, the formation itself takes a little bit of time. It needs a specific makeup under the statute. If you form it, it's gotta hold a series of hearings over a number of weeks. It would then need to produce a rapport. We're pretty confident that any committee working in good faith would produce a report that's consistent with, you know, the community needs and goals that we've all identified. And then the district would be able to proceed to actually affecting the transfer of property. You know, so all in all, and obviously I've left out a lot of detail, but we think that path, start to finish, looks like about a four to six month path. Now, I will, I will give you a caveat. I've been running government processes for a long time, and every time I can, every time I sort of lay out a path on a calendar and it looks sensible, you always run into hurdles that derail it a little bit, and you always have a little bit of delay. So if I say four to six months, you know, yeah, it might be, you know, six or eight or nine or something like that. We don't think it's an unreasonably lengthy path. One other comment I want to make, and then I'll turn this back to others, is while we do think transfer of the property to the Children's Center is the best path, I want to be clear on sort of why that is, because I think it indicates some of the other concerns the board has, mainly that the center, you know, you've identified some maintenance issues at the center, some things that may need upgrades, you know, things under state statute called the Field Act, you know, which is really designed to make sure, you know, kids are safe at a place like this. And if we go this way, one of the benefits of that is you have one party, not two, sort of controlling that process for making those upgrades. The sort of legal and regulatory scheme under which you make those upgrades, it's far less onerous, you know. You'd be talking about now private nonprofit doing these things, as opposed to, you know, a public entity under the Field Act. But it doesn't mean you don't repair what needs repairing. It doesn't mean you don't, you know, make things safe that need to be safe. We would still do that, and one of the reasons we like this path is we think it's the best path to getting that done reasonably efficiently, you know, within sort of a reasonable range of resources that would need to be extended to get to that. So those are the sort of somewhat tentative reports on where we stand right now, but we're, we're still working very diligently to sort of map this out in as much detail as we can, and that's sort of the detail we have at this point.
I think that that lays out very well where it is that we're at. We've, we also are looking at another possibility, which is there is a code section that allows transfer to another public entity. So we've double tracked it so that the path is to try to get some relief for the liability problem. And under that path, we've identified a number of entities that we're gonna discuss with, and also look at the possibility of working with some of these other entities, understanding fully that the preference would be from the Children's Center, a transfer to them. If there is a legal snag, we will also be looking at this other option. With that, that is where we are at. Michael, I don't know if you have anything else?
No, thank you for adding that, Terry. That's an important detail.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. The only other thing I was gonna add, as far as process-wise, with respect to the last, the last item there, and the outreach and communication with other public entities, is that that's been part of our committee conversations together, and that we have agreed to do that cooperatively, and that those meetings are gonna be done together, so that when we go out and do outreach to the Town of Fairfax and to the County of Marin, which we've already started doing, and we already have some meetings set up with various public entities, that we're doing that all together. So that we're all gonna be sitting at the table together and having those conversations again, in that spirit of us trying to make this work out cooperatively and working together. So that's also in the process and being done together, along those lines. Are there any questions that the trustees have of the two attorneys that we have here in terms of the process that's been laid out, or any technical? I mean, I know that it was a bit of a, kind of an overview summary, and obviously the next, we're also, we also have a schedule of meetings. We've agreed to meet weekly, so we're continuing this process along. So when the attorneys talked about the timeline and vetting these options, we'll be having those conversations together through these weekly meetings that we're having as a, as a team together. So just so that my fellow trustees understand kind of where we are in the process, along that lines, in case. So those details and all of the vetting and stuff will come out together when we all meet, because the attorneys are there as well. So there isn't anything that we're doing separately that we're not all engaged in going forward on that vetting process, as far as the details go. So, the only, the only question, one of the questions that I had is, Michael, you had, you had... Michael, you had talked about the 7-Eleven committee and that it sounded like even under Ed Code 17458, which a reasonably smooth path, then it was still that 7-Eleven is the surplus property, having to deem the property a surplus property again. And Terry, is that, does that surplus property 7-Eleven process have to be? My understanding is that it doesn't have to be followed if the property is transferred to another public entity. Is there anything that you want to add about that?
Sure, there's a, the two approaches have different requirements. Ordinarily, when you sell a property that is owned by a school district, you have to convene a 7-Eleven committee, which is formed by various people who are stakeholders in the community of the school district. And that group reviews the various options with regard to the property, the need for properties, and ultimately they come up with a report. The board adopts that report and then there's a whole list of groups that need to get a crack at the property, so to speak, including, for example, under Naylor Act, the ability to acquire property for parks purposes. In that line is the, is what's typically called nonprofits. And they're typically at the very end, at the very last people that are offered the property to. And under the Ed Code Section 17458, they're moved up right behind parks uses. So they're actually given kind of an early path at looking at the property after cities, counties, parks, districts get an opportunity to make an offer on the property.
Okay.
Under the--
Terry, if I may just, sorry, if I could just interject. In Terry, I apologize because we had a conversation earlier today and we haven't been able to talk since. But I think there's actually a strong possibility that under the 17458 scheme, the children's center would stand in line, even in front of any Naylor Act claimants. But again, I'm throwing that out as an issue. We haven't talked about it. For the board's benefit, this is the process. These are the kind of conversations we're having sort of all day these days to try and refine this as best we can.
Okay.
We don't usually have them in front of the board.
Okay.
The second alternative is what is called an exception. Under the exception, you can transfer directly to another public entity. And that transfer is under any terms that are agreed on between the two entities. It just requires advertisement and a paper of news, of general circulation. And there are some other resolution requirements. My recollection is it requires a super majority vote, so two-thirds vote. That process is more streamlined. It is, does not have as many requirements to it. Under both processes, there is what's called an AB 1486 notice that gets sent out to the California Department of Housing and Community Development so that they can identify if the property could have been used for housing purposes, for especially for low-income housing. We expect that HCD, Housing and Community Development, will not have an issue with either of those processes. But this is a new requirement that came in January of this year. So those are the two processes that we are currently looking at. As you can tell from our moments ago discussion, we are still poring through the law. They're both very complicated.
Great, thank you. Any other clarification questions? We'll go ahead and, if not, go out for public comment and then bring it back for any discussions or comments. How are we doing? Good? All right. All right. Looks like we have 11, 11 public comments or 11 people who've said that they want to make a public comment here. We've got our microphone over here. So I'm just going to go ahead and shuffle these up and go ahead and call you all up. And you can line up in whatever order these cards get shuffled up into. So, all right. I'll go ahead and call out these names and you can line up here at the microphone. And can I have one of my trustees volunteer to do timekeeping? You want to? Thank you. And we got it down. All right, we have Stephanie Hellman. We've got Christine Kelly. Stephanie Hellman, then Christine Kelly, then Zoe Hunter, then Jennifer Frishon. Stephanie-- So go ahead. When I call your name, go ahead and line up over here. Hold on a second. Stephanie, Christine, Zoe, Jennifer Frishon, Isaac Kiptum, Lisa Canon, Peggy Doyle, Tori Chappell, Sharon Sager, Jennifer Treffkey, and Barbara Kohler.
Charlie, I don't know that you've defined how long--
Three minutes. So we'll do the three minutes, the three minutes at the podium. Is everybody clear on the? Great, all right. You ready? Great, okay, thanks.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Hellman. I am the mayor of Fairfax and obviously a resident of Fairfax. And so I speak to you as an official, an elected official that is obviously a stakeholder in this and also just as a resident who's deeply, deeply concerned. So I want to thank you for hosting this forum and the ones prior. And I speak, I know I speak for my colleagues on the council. We have a letter in development expressing how much the Fairfax-San Onselmo Children's Center, what a critical role they play in our community, that it is a gem in our community. I think most, if not all of us, have listened in on these Ross Valley School District board meetings concerning this topic. And we're very moved by the families who have shown up and shared their passionate stories. So I just wanted you to know, we hear you and we feel, like I said, it's providing wonderful value to the community. So that letter is in development right now. I did want to share that myself, council member Renee Goddard, and our town attorney are meeting with the Deer Park Working Group. I believe it's Thursday this week, Thursday afternoon. And the gentleman, I believe it was the attorney, who just spoke about the option of the sale transfer to a public entity. In recent years, there have been a slew of housing laws that we do need to look at. So I'm just responding to the gentleman, I believe it was the attorney, who said that he doesn't believe HCD would have a problem. I think much more legal discovery is required and we will do that. And we're looking forward to that meeting this week. So thank you so much again. Thank you for all being here.
Hi, my name is Christine Kelly and I'm a Deer Park resident as well as a mother of a child in the Ross Valley School District. That being said, I think I speak on behalf of many of my neighbors. There's no other neighbor that I'd rather have in Deer Park. There's nobody else. I love the children's center. I had a different speech before hearing your opening comments, so I'm going to kind of mix them together. But before you spoke, I had some areas of concern. And that was the initial 60-day, we'll call it correspondence, if it wasn't to notice, whatever that was. I don't understand why there wasn't a public meeting held before that 60-day notice. What alerted everybody to think, was there a notice? Are we being evicted? I mean, it was like a fire was lit on that Friday before the Fairfax Festival. And I didn't know that there was a public notice hearings saying, let's put this notice out. Today I'm hearing, we're working together. You want us here forever. They're never going to move them and we're friends forever. But I'm wondering, why wasn't that feeling and language expressed in the initial correspondence? So why wasn't that 60-day notice saying, hi, we're writing to you because we want to work together and start talking, not frightening these people to, you know, sell empanadas to get an attorney to help them read through this paperwork? Literally, literally at the center. Another concern is the short notice meetings. I came to the first meeting. I would have loved to come to the others. Well, what I thought was the first meeting. I would have loved to come to the others and I learned from my friend, she's like, oh no, it was just last minute. It was, I just found out about it then. And so my concern is that, you know, there might be now a record of all these meetings, but the true, the veracity, the truth of those meetings, it only carries the weight if everybody has noticed and knows about it and timely, not just 24 hours. You know, 48 hours, that kind of thing. I had concerns also about the vast differences in the rhetoric between the Ross Valley School District attorney, what he was saying, talking about fire issues as well as what the marshals' language, what he was saying after walking through and saying, no, a water pump is fine. So these are my concerns. I'm just sharing them and voicing them. I don't know who was the author behind the rhetoric of talking about all these statements. Perhaps we could just be more careful because using inflammatory or incorrect language really carries a lot of weight and scares people, frightens people and makes them think, is that the basis? So lastly, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I just don't see what the rush is. If we're talking about a transfer, I think that's a great idea. I'd encourage you to create the entity, maybe start the paperwork early since it takes about five months, you know, with this alternative one.
I'm going to hold everyone to three minutes.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask that we respect everybody's comments. They're here to talk, to give their input. And so I am going to ask that we don't clap, applause, and make that of it and so that we can just hear everybody's comments directly. Thank you. Sure, okay. We'll set the timer for two minutes, two minutes and 30 seconds and then it will go off. So when you hear the timer, that's the wrap it up for 30 seconds bell. Fine.
Hi, my name's Zoe Hunter. I'm a Fairfax resident and my son goes to the children's center. And I do feel like there's been a drastic tone change in what you had to say. And I, my big concern is that you guys all got together and paid this lawyer to come up with all these facts that seem to all be false from my perspective. And I'm concerned that you guys are using taxpayers' money to pay for a lawyer who is trying to close down the children's center or, as you guys put it, move them. But, you know, it's very concerning to me because literally the children's center is selling empanadas and they are so valuable in our community and everybody feels the same. So I really, really, really hope that your tone is not, there's nothing sneaky going on when I'm very suspicious when you say something about or another entity. I mean, it's pretty obvious you guys should all work together and transfer ownership to the children's center who serves the community beautifully and has done so for 50 years. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Frisch. And first of all, I want to say Christine Kelly, you stated most of my concerns very eloquently. As I understand it, and I'm no expert here, the children's center lease hasn't been renewed for a long period, for several years now. And it's just really disturbing to me, again, not an expert, that this conversation didn't start a long time ago. The tone at which this came out was very adversarial. And I would ask the trustees to remember that living in this community is not always easy for everyone that's here. I can't speak about everybody's situation, but when your basic rental price or basic house payment is going to start around $3,000 a month, paying for childcare is critically important. And should this only organization that is providing this care in this area go away, I can't imagine how many of these families would be able to stay here. And they bring a great diversity of experience and insight and are generally a gift to the community. There's many different kinds of diversity and it must be celebrated. And I would hope that going forward in all things that the district does, that they honor that and honor these families who truly do not deserve to be scared that they're going to lose their childcare when they need to get up and go to work the next day.
My name is Isaac Kiptum and I'm a graduate of the children's center. I believe the children's center is a necessary service of the community. It helps hard-working parents be able to get up the next day and know that their kids will have a safe, healthy place to stay and have fun. But if you take away all of the affordable, necessary services from the community, wouldn't that just be another form of redlining? So anyone who can, and everyone who can, in the spirit of liberty and justice and for all, you must fight for the Fairfax-San Onselmo Children's Center.
My name is Lisa Canon. I'm cautiously hopeful that you'll forge a path toward, forward that enables the center, the district, and the larger community to evade a potentially disastrous decision, but want to address what got us here. You have the opportunity to make this be the last time you fail to engage a broad group of stakeholders early in the process in order to make better, smarter, and responsive decisions about critical public issues. This did not have to be a near miss. This district has been operating with some unhealthy and abnormal procedures over the last five to seven years that have become habitual. It's not normal to meet 14 times over the course of two years about the Deer Park property enclosed session, reporting nothing out to the community about your vision for this property and your plans until a month ago. It's not normal to come out of those secret meetings to hire an attorney who aggressively represented you, communicating with a long-term tenant and treasured community asset, telling them that they are a liability and they need to be off district property efficiently as the only means of protecting you with no public process and no communication out. The only thing we know about your choice to hire this attorney, since you have told us nothing about your vision or your intention, is that he was last and only hired to ensure that district space would be inaccessible to the charter. You have choices in your representation and the choices that you make say things to the community about what is important to you. What you did not do was hire an expert on surplus property to educate yourselves and the community early about what might have facilitated a different and far more efficient solution by now, one that enabled the center to work toward better preservation of the buildings and for site and water upgrades useful for the welfare of its students and the neighbors. And what you did not do is schedule workshops where there could be questions and answers and give and take and a diversity of opinion expressed. It's also not normal in Marin, while perhaps technically legal for public agencies to hold Zoom meetings that do not allow for the public to comment. No other school districts that I have seen so far do this. You only allow emailed comments. It's not normal to use a district website to post subjective and biased information. It's not normal to exclude an essential community partner like the Ross Valley Fire Chief from critical discussions about fire safety from day one and to substitute actual collaboration with a proclamation to the IJ about safety and disseminated FAQs that counter his appraisals. You've been acting in risky, reckless, and insulated ways that do not do public education property of the public favor. You now open your meetings with a land acknowledgement. Others have pointed out the hypocrisy of doing so while dangling eviction over marginalized people. Land acknowledgements need to be about truth-telling, about accountability, and a call to action. I'd like to call for accountability and action with regard to your overuse of privacy and secrecy and to reverse-- secrecy, and to reverse the trend of excluding public process and collaboration. The quality of your decision-making until now regarding Deer Park and very possibly other district properties has suffered from an insular and secretive process that has occurred in an echo chamber outside of public scrutiny. It's not how RVSD has always operated, and it's about time for accountability and action to address how dysfunction has become normalized.
Again, I'm just gonna ask if we could not clap after every single person. I'm just gonna continue to ask that of you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Peggy Dodge, and I'm a San Anselmo resident, parent of Ross Valley School District graduates. I have also been a lifetime, I've had a lifetime career in early care and education, and I, I was triggered a bit by the attorney's statement that the goal was to get out from under liability. Do, you're, you're an education board, do you not see the value of early care and education to children, to their families, to our communities, to our country, to success when later on they are in your system? So I think, I feel like, in, in one of the meetings, there was this thing about, some people think Fairfax San Anselmo is a school, but it's not, but it is. I mean, we could, I had a lot of classes in education where we really talked about schooling, and it's that education. What is education? So I would like to see this, I, I'm optimistic, cautiously, that this process is now working in more of a partnership, but I would like to see an embrace of this school district on early care and education, and then value that that has for our society and for our towns and for children and families' success. You're embroiled in this right now, and you're also embroiled in trying to meet this mandate to blast out this TK thing. Oh, and by the way, the kids need eight hours, and you gotta figure out where you're gonna do that. Have you been approaching early care and education partners in that quest? Have you considered any opportunity to work with around our shared missions that we care about? So ceding this property to Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center, one of the highest-quality early care and education settings in the nation that covers children from birth to fifth grade, would be a feather in your cap. So, so let's get away from this, the goal is getting out from under our liability. How about the goal be really embracing education cradle to grave? Thanks.
My name is Tori Chappell, and I've lived in San Anselmo for 35 years and also been an educator in the community for the same amount of time. I am glad to hear that cooperation and communication are going to be seen a little differently, but it's important, I think, for you as a school board to acknowledge to yourselves, if not to the community, that our community's trust in you has been severely damaged. And so for, for us to believe your words, there has to be some repair, and that's on you. And how you do that, that would be something that, instead of a $5 million new building that we can't use for this kind of meeting, to hire a professional to help guide you, and how do you repair this kind of damage and distrust that has accumulated over time, and in particular regarding this situation? We're talking about, all of us are, are invested in education and the well-being of children, and I do believe that. And us modeling integrity and honesty and trust and repair when we make mistakes is a way that we can continue to teach our community and our youth. And I trust that you will do the right thing, which is whatever you can to keep the children's center alive and well. And I also hope that there will be translation. I'm, there's lots of translators, you said you're looking into it. There's people available, like now, that could do some translation for a population that this is impacting, many of whom don't speak English well enough to understand the complexity of the language that's going on in these meetings. So instead of looking into it, I hope at the next meeting, there's some form of translation in and of, that would show repair, that would show respect. And that seems like a pretty simple thing to do. And there's people who could use that income. And, but most importantly, I hope to see you make some efforts in repairing the distrust that has come about in this process.
So, hello? My name is Jennifer, and I'm new to the community, and I'm originally from Germany. One reason why I came here to Northern California is because of the liberal views of people. It upsets me to learn that this behavior is going on in what I believe was known as a liberal, open-minded region of California. Diversity, diversity is so important all over the world. This is the location of worlds that I can afford to keep this center for the children. There's enough work to share with others, and there's enough desire here for the center to remain open. It would disappoint me greatly to, to learn that this for did not do any actions when action is needed now to protect the children's center.
Thank you, Lisa. I just want to say thank you for expressing so eloquently many of the points that I would like to make, and also Tori for mentioning, why is there not an interpreter here tonight? I just can't believe you couldn't find somebody between the last meeting and this meeting to have someone here. Finally, I just want to reiterate what I've said many times at previous meetings, is that the school property belongs to our community, belongs to all of us, and you are serving as trustees for that property. Many of you may only be on the board four or five, 10 years, maybe, and yet these properties will belong to our community for as long as we can have them. So I am very much in favor of selling this property to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center, but I would like to also have you look at having a clause in there that you have first rights to purchase it back if they ever leave the property, because it is a community asset that will never be able to be purchased again in the future. So please consider doing that as a part of your negotiations. Also, I do support selling it directly to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center and not another agency, because I can see that people change over time on some of these different boards, and the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center will always have, it is a core value of theirs to keep the property, where if you sell it to another organization, it may not always be their core value, and people may change, and feelings about the property may change. So I really encourage you to find a way to make it work. And also, thank you for making me feel a little bit encouraged by having the possibility of a 7-Eleven committee, because it didn't sound previously like there was any interest in that. And yet I think when you want to involve the community, that's the, that's the outreach, that's the way that you involve community in conversation about surplus property sales. So I would hate to see you avoid having that kind of a committee, especially if you think that you can bypass it by selling to another agency, so you don't have to have that committee. And then I would also like to say, it feels very unfair to me that you have other tenants at surplus property sites that are not having to go through the same process. You have other tenants who are not being asked to go through the same process of keeping the facility upgraded to current code. And I just think it's kind of ridiculous to expect a facility that you haven't had a school in for 30, 40 years to upgrade the facility to current code. If you were ever to reopen that property, there's no way that you would just walk right onto the property anyway. You would spend millions and millions of dollars to improve that property, so to expect some tenant to do that work for you as a school district just seems absurd to me. So thank you very much for your time. I feel slightly encouraged.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Kohler. I'm a member of the Fairfax Town Council, have been a member for nine years, have been mayor a couple of times, and are glad our mayor is here tonight. I'm only speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the town council, but I'm here to support the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. I'm here to support a direct transfer to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. In my role as a council member, I sit on a county committee which distributes limited HUD funds for public services, capital projects, and housing. And one of the things I've done over the years is continue to fight hard to make sure that the children's center receives the limited funds that we can provide, so they can provide transportation to the children. As you know, for those of you who have been there, the center has served incredibly well a lot of disadvantaged children in our community. They're raising up our kids who have nowhere else to go should the children's center close. And I want to say, my neighbor Eva Poloni is here tonight, whose two children graduated from the children's center and are wonderful neighbors. But I just want to reiterate again, my support for a direct transfer to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center, let's keep the kids there, let's not disrupt them, and let's move on. They have been a wonderful asset for our community for 50 years, and we need the diversity, we need these young children to have a great place to go after school. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Good to see all of you again. I came out to the first meeting. My name's Henry, by the way, excuse me. My brother is standing right behind me, he's not gonna talk, but I was wondering if you could step forward whenever my time is done, so just in case I'm not done talking or saying what I want, is that okay?
He's welcome to speak after you. If you're not done, I want to turn it over him to give him three minutes, that's fine.
May his three minutes be added to mine?
Yes, that, we, I haven't extended that to anyone else, so just...
Okay, no worries, it was worth asking. All right, so, just to make it really quick, my name's Henry. I am what you would also know as a dreamer. I am not born here, I'm born in Guatemala. To make it short, it's actually quite a long story. So I came here when I was eight, straight into the education program here, manner, zero English. First person I met was Eric right there, Heidi as well, when I arrived to the children's center. Super special to me, my brother as well, my family. You've seen how much love that little piece of Fairfax gets. I know you've seen how much people have come out, how many kids, and there's a lot more that haven't even, they're just out of state, there, you know, there's so much more to that, so much, so more depth, anyways. But, um, anyways, you know the little rock that holds the boulder from tipping over and going down the, the mountain? That's the children's center for a lot of families. Again, you don't know the number, so that's unfortunate, but that's what it's been to my life, and we've seen that it's kind of what it's been for Fairfax as well, Fairfax as well. It's kind of, you know, been a very important part of the organism or community, whatever you want to call it, right? It's been neglected of its rightful properties, nutrients, whatever you want to call it, right, financial support, but it's great. It's a great, it's, it's something we cannot lose, right? If we're looking down on our belly right now, we have cancer, are we gonna just say like, oh yeah, I'm just gonna leave it there and let it be? No, right, we're gonna do something to get it off and keep that little small part of the bigger organism alive, because it's brought us this, 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 this much far, right? So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I got something to say, too. So just adding what my brother Henry said, by the way, I'm Marconi. As you said, the center is a special place to us, it's like a second family to us, somewhere we can go. Just like to say what's up to Heidi and Eric, because they're like our other parents to us. Without the center, our single mom would have struggled, like, really hard to take care of us both, but with the center, she's able to work and then pick us up with no stress, not to worry about where we are, because the center keeps us safe. And also with academics, personally for me, I had a speech problem when I was really young, and my English was horrible, even though I was born here. And with the center, I've been able to pass through preschool and elementary swiftly, and use those skills to go through middle school and high school, and now I'm going to college, which many of my elementary teachers said I couldn't. So, yeah. Peace and love. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you all for coming up and, and sharing your thoughts with us. I'm gonna bring it back to the board for board discussion, and to see if the board has any, any other, anything that they would like to talk about with respect to the direction that we're going, any additional questions or anything like that. I mean, I, I will start it off and say, I am also optimistic. I think the working relationship, especially the meetings that I've been in, has been a really good one. I do acknowledge that this got off to a difficult start for many different, for many different, many different reasons, and one of the things I remember doing with, in situations like this, both with my family but in general, is talking about what contribution did we all play into a difficult situation? And I believe that we all have contributions to make that are both positive, and that we all make mistakes, and we all contribute to difficult situations. And so there was a number of contributing factors in the, in the past, but I do believe that we are on a good path forward, and I really just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the three of you for sitting down with us at a table and for the last couple of meetings. And I know that I've ended those meetings also just saying how it feels like we're, we're on a good path. So I'm feeling very optimistic about this. I feel that the direction that we're moving is a good one, including the direction of selling the property. I'm not unrealistic that there's probably not going to be some more bumps along the way, and I'm going to remain optimistic that we will be able to weather those bumps in a, it, it may be difficult, but I hope that we can continue to work together through those difficulties rather than against each other when difficulties arise, and I think that we've got a good pathway forward on that. So as far as just the, the options go in terms of a discussion up here for options, I mean, I'm open to all of those options. I think following this path, there was some timeline talked about, so I was happy to hear from the lawyers in terms of the timeline, that it felt like it was a workable, a reasonable amount of time. For those of you who have listened to some of our past meetings, you know, we've talked about what does a reasonable amount of time look like, hence the conversation that happened about the 30-60 days. I personally, in meetings before the June meeting, and other board members also expressed that 30-60 was not reasonable timeline. It was what we were being advised by our legal counsel, but I think we also recognized that that was not a timeline that was gonna be workable for the center, we were in the middle of the school year. But I think that we're now on track with a really good conversation around timelines that seem reasonable, workable, agreeable, so that also gives me hope that the timelines that we're talking about are moving forward. And, one other comment before I'll open it up, is I also am very And one other comment before I'll open it up is I also am very conscious of we don't know what we don't know. And we may come up against barriers that none of us can work with. And that we do have these three pathways. They are all three still on the table. We're not taking any of them off the table. And that we need to keep our peripheral vision open while we keep our laser focus on a particular path forward. So I just, that's my feeling is that we can kind of keep that dual bifocal lens as we move forward. I don't know if anyone else has a comment on the, where we are in the pathways and.
I have to say, I think, I think because we never, some of us have, you know, have not been here as long as others have been on the board. And so there's a lot of getting up to speed on things. And I think there's also a learning curve in the beginning. So part of this has been learning and this has been a fantastic learning experience, as difficult as it has been in some places. But I think we understand and what we've all been saying and we're listening for sure. I mean, we're doing our best and I understand how important, you know, the Children's Center is. Believe me, I've read every single thing that's come my way and I've answered everything that I've, you know, everything has been taken in. And I really appreciate the fact that we are moving forward. And I see us working together and that makes me really happy. And I'm hopeful that yes, we will find something that works for everybody. But I'm also, I'm also glad that we have like a focus and there's this, you know, before we didn't know a lot of things. And I, I didn't know things and we needed to find out about it. And I think, I regret the fact that so many people were upset. It was, it caught me off guard because from my perspective, I'm still learning what is going on and what, I'm hearing what is coming from the attorney. And I'm learning those things as well. And so when we got the huge backlash, at least what felt like a backlash, I was caught off guard. Because I haven't made a decision. I don't think any of us have made a decision. I don't have enough information to make a decision. But I like the information we're getting now and I feel like we have a path. And I am, I'm very happy and I'm clear that we have a path. And that makes me, you know, relieved because I, I was getting the feeling that we were getting criticism for decisions we hadn't made. So I feel better now because I like the path and the possibilities of the decisions we will be making, not that they've been made. So I don't know. I just, I like the fact that there's like a distinction point now. And I feel like before, I, how am I going to make a decision when I don't have enough information? It seems irresponsible. It's like I'm supposed to be fiscally responsible for this property. And I also know that there's responsibility to the children who are at the center. And I, believe me, children are the why I'm here. That is my purpose for being here. So my whole point is I'm glad we have a path. I'm glad we're working together and I'd like to see where things keep going, so.
I wanted to remind everybody. I'll just hold it down. You know, we are all here because we, we love children. Not just our children in our district. We, we, we like the community's children. We recognize that these are volunteer positions that we care. And sometimes it's important to make sure that the community knows that you and we are all part of this community together. And we may have different charges and responsibilities. The Children's Center is fabulous. And I've been waiting to see it for a long time. I know many people who have been through there. I don't think anybody up here does not agree with most of the sentiment coming of how important the Children's Center is to the greater Ross Valley community and beyond. Sometimes it's hard to sit up here knowing what we know and being accused of things that just haven't been daylighted to the public yet. But that's okay. We can handle that. I can handle that. I think most of my, most of my colleagues can handle that. Provided everything gets daylighted. You know, the truth of what's happening is that there is no agenda, no hidden something that's happening to hurt other people in any part of this community. I spent some time on the town council in Fairfax too. And I remember that the most important thing at the end of the day is us. And when I say us, I don't mean the people on this side of the dais. I mean, everybody in the chairs in this gym. I mean, everybody in the community. We all share. We all need to work together. We all need to listen and try to give people the benefit of the doubt that the motivations are not nefarious, that the motivations are because we love children too. And there's nothing that can't be done with proper daylighting of issues and listening and giving other people the benefit of the doubt. And I'm proud of my group that I work with up here. And I want the community to know that I'm very proud of the Children's Center and the work that it's done. And I spent some time personally and walked through with them to learn everything I could about that Children's Center years ago. And I just want the community at large to remember that it's an us issue and we, and we hear you.
Wesley?
We just want to thank you guys for working with us and for going to the meetings and to doing, doing the hard work to get where we need to get going. So thank you. I know it's a time consuming process, but thank you.
And then the only thing that I'm, I'm going to add or ask for clarification. When you use the word daylighting, when things, I think part of that is because we are overlapping, as we explained at our last meeting, that we're overlapping our discovery process with our decision-making process. And then often you complete the full discovery process first and then you get into the brainstorming around options and then you get into the deciding of the options. One of the reasons why we called the special meeting at the last, the last time, all of our meetings do have a board agenda, I mean, have a calendar. So our regular meetings on our website does have a calendar of all of our regular meetings from here for the rest of the year. We did call a special meeting at the last time because we realized that our regular meeting, which is tonight, there was going to be a very long time lapse between the June meeting, where there was a lot of information and sentiment shared, and this particular meeting. And I personally, as board chair, called that special meeting because I felt like we needed to keep the process moving and have another meeting. So we did call a special meeting. Special meetings have different timeframes, but we do do public notice for that. But by, by way of saying, as more information comes out, that's also just because we are going to have more information because we are overlapping this discovery process. So just wanting to make all of, I mean, you guys know that. We've had these conversations around additional reports coming out on the fire stuff. And so there is going to be continued information coming to all of us to help us make the best decision possible. So there's not something like, that we have now that we're holding on to and that we haven't shared with the Children's Center. But there will, more than likely, the discovery process is going to continue on. Marcy, I don't know if there's anything that you need by way of direction from us to continue to move forward?
Thank you. I just want to see if there's any additional direction than what has been provided so far at the June 23rd special meeting. So at that time, again, it was to begin to explore options with the center. We have done that. We're also, as we've stated through this evening, have agendized meetings set. We're also identifying and have meetings set on the calendar with different agencies, public agencies, as well as other entities who may be of support through this entire process. And just as we go back in, we have another meeting on Thursday, our Deer Park Working Group. And just to see if there's any additional direction that you have. Otherwise, we will continue to come back regularly, likely at every board meeting, to provide an update and to again, continue to seek direction, clarification, as well as at some point when a decision needs to be made requesting such action. Anything else?
I don't have any additional. As I said, we're coordinating our schedules. We know when your board meetings are, you know, when our board meetings are. We're meeting weekly. We're talking with all of the different agencies cooperatively. So I, I don't have any other further direction. And our next board meeting is on.
August 2nd.
August 2nd, which is not that far away. So we'll have our interim meetings and then meet on August 2nd with an update. I don't have anything else? We'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll see them on Thursday and we'll probably see a number of you first week of August. Thank you, guys. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and take a couple minute break while it seems like a lot of people are leaving. And so I don't want to continue the meeting while people are leaving. So. On summer 22, 20, excuse me, presentation on summer 2022 facilities project. This is a discussion and information item. And which staff am I turning this over?
I'll just start it off with, just to say that how impressed I am with our chief business official, Chris Carson, as well as our maintenance and operations staff, who not only just during the summertime takes a look at and does the cleaning of getting ready for the next school year, but also does a thorough review of our facilities and ensures that during this break of time, because there is such a span between the time our kids leave at the end of the year to starting a new school year, of taking a look at what other projects might be able to be done. So just thank you so much, Chris and Desma Kissick and all of our staff for taking such good care of our school facilities. And with that, Chris, turn it over to you.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to talk this evening regarding our summer projects. And so kind of a breakdown. There we go. What we're going to be talking about very quickly is just some of the deep cleaning. I'm going to show just a little bit, so the.
And just for you, is this being livestreamed with the presentation too? Okay, sorry. Thanks.
And so it will just be some quick photos of some of the deep cleaning that's going on. But then we'll also talk about some of the special projects that we do have going on as well. And so as we discuss the deep cleaning, I just wanted to show the picture on the left. What it does show is a floor that has been stripped. And you'll notice that all the furniture and everything is removed. This happens in, in all of our classrooms. And then you'll notice the photo on the right. You'll see how we have cleaned the carpet to the, on the left side, it's gray. And then you see how shiny the floors are. That's what is going to end up happening to the picture, the classroom that's on the left as well. Another thing that is happening is traditionally, this is one of our Gen 7 classrooms. And these are the modular, or the, the classrooms that were built at each of the elementary schools. But also it's the same flooring that we have in the new section of White Hill Middle School. And for years, we were told not to do anything with the floors because they're not made to, to be waxed. And one of the things that I pushed back on with staff last year is to be able to do that. And because the floors to me always seemed dirty, even when they were mopped and cleaned up and everything. And so what we did is we came to a happy conclusion based upon doing a test of our White Hill Middle School hallways, that the waxing does work on, on this flooring as well. And you'll see here, this is what it will look like once we're done. And so that they'll look nice and maintain as well. So the staff has really been doing a real thorough job. What we've been doing is team cleaning and we have staff moving around to different campuses. And we have large groups of our staff working at several schools at a time. The other avenue that, that we do during the summer is our special projects. And we are limited in the scope of the projects that we can handle just because we do have a small staff. We also have a small district in general, but we do have large needs. One of the things that you'll see, this, this is actually here at Way Thomas School. And this is the building that is actually right in front of us over here, next to the office. This is the YMCA area of the, the campus. And I was looking at the, the louvers on the overhang. And so I climbed up there because we were, we were also making a repair to the roof on the, the soffit because it was leaking. And so as I was up there just looking at that, I, I'm five foot 11. I'm not really short, but without being up on the roof, I wouldn't have seen what you see on the right. And what you see on the right is the roof that's up above and the gutter. And so that is, the top part of that on, on the right is the, the flashing for the roof. And right below it is the gutter and what you see is exposed wood. And so what we have is an issue with our gutter system pulling down, but it's also a roofing issue. So we're working with a contractor just to get that repaired. The roof itself is in good shape. It's just a minor repair. But if we don't make these types of changes, what is something small could become something very large in terms of cost. So this is something that we're working on right now. This is a restroom that is here at Way Thomas as well. And this is something that we have or had at Brookside last year as well. And so what you'll notice is the tiles that are white. Those are tiles that we've replaced. And a lot of them are falling off. And you also see on the, the one on the right, you see different colors of blue tile. So there's different repairs that we've done. And just, it's, it's an old restroom. You'll see here, we had to make a, a little bit deeper repair on, on the tile on the left. And the one on the right is what that same wall looks like now. And so the staff have been just making those repairs on the tile. Now, on the surface, that looks really, really bad because then you look at that and go, well, that doesn't match and it doesn't, just doesn't look appealing. It kind of looks dirty. This is what it's going to look like. Short order. This is the restroom at Brookside School. What we'll be doing is reglazing and it will be these same colors. And so those two restrooms that are just over here, they're actually just up next to the office. Those will be looking very similar to these. The benefit of reglazing them is you also, what ends up happening with the tile is it, the grout starts to absorb the, the different enzymes and things. So they start to smell at time. And this actually refreshes the restroom, makes it look brand new at a fraction of the cost. And so that, that's what we'll be doing here at Way Thomas this year. Now, another project that we're working on is at Manor School. And it is the multipurpose room. And what you'll see is we have a, a planter box or planter boxes that are next to the multipurpose room in back. And as we started looking at them and at the wall system, we had issues with the wall system. So we knew that we were going to have to do some repairs and we were going to have to remove some of the wall systems. And if you look, the one on the right is actually some work that we were doing just inside the windowsill, right next to a planter box in the back. And what we found is that the, the sill was starting to deteriorate to the point that as we started to just punch around there, it actually fell apart. And so that's a large issue, obviously. And so we started looking more on the outside, removing the planter boxes. You can see, we've removed the outer siding. What we found is that there's more T11 wood siding underneath it. The problem is that it's not quite as small of a project as we were thinking. So we're doing some investigative work. And we did have to remove some of the, we had to remove all of the planter boxes first and foremost because they had the same issues that you're seeing in this wood siding. But also we had large roots from trees, which you can see here. Do you see the large tree on the left? Between the wood planter box and the building, there's actually a, a large root that you can see that's sticking and starting to go underneath the foundation. So we're going to have to remove that tree as well. And so putting planter boxes with trees that are raised up above are actually a little problematic when they're that close to a building. And also to have wood that close to wood siding is problematic as well for long-term repairs and maintain, maintaining these, these, these buildings. But I also wanted to show you, this one you might actually. This is actually what it looks like. And I wanted to make sure that, that the board sees this. This is actually what's, what we're. This is actually what we're finding. And as you'll notice, you see, I'm sorry for the movement on the camera, but you also see the movement. What we have found are termites, and so this is termite damage. So that's why when we're looking at it, we're doing the investigative work, finding how far it's gone. We're in the process of working with a contractor to at least look at it, to see if we have any larger issues. And we'll be investigating and reporting back as we move forward. But this, these are the types of projects that you, as you move during the summer, they might start out small, and they start to expand. But in the end, it's about maintaining our buildings. And so one of the things that I would recommend that we do moving forward, just as an aside, is if we're gonna have some wood siding like that, is not, not have wood siding put on top of wood siding, but remove it and take care of the problem to begin with, so. And with that, that is the last, last thing that I wanted to discuss. And if you have any questions about what we're doing, or just about the school facilities in general. Certainly something we can take a look at, absolutely.
Might be, it might be a significant project, so you might want to take a look to see whether that's something that can be submitted to insurance.
So the question was, did they put the T-111 on top of the T-111? And yes, they did. And so moving forward, that would be my recommendation to not do that type of thing, to remove it. Because if you're, if you're having to replace it, it's because it's probably in bad shape to begin with. And you might have water damage, you might have termite damage. And just in general, it's a good idea to remove it altogether.
Do, do we use Hardy Plank for replacement?
Could you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
Do we use Hardy Plank for replacement instead of T-111? Hardy Plank is the cement fiber, it's like the cement fiberboard. It's really good. I've used it in a couple of different, and it looks very similar. But it's got really good fire resistance, it's got termite, it's not a wood product, but it looks like wood, and it's sheets, and so.
It's certainly something to look into, absolutely.
I'd look into, it might cost a little bit more upfront, but it's not gonna do that, what we saw in those pictures.
And that's part of what I was talking about with staff and how I look at projects. Sometimes it's worth a little, it's worth it in the long run to spend a little bit more now because it might save you in terms of maintenance costs, in terms of replacement, but also just in terms of your routine maintenance on something as well. And so you're always looking for ways to save money and save time in general. And so you always want to balance all of that. It isn't necessarily 100% about cost. Absolutely. That's, that is a great question. And so we did find evidence of the damage on the other side of the same building. And so we're definitely looking at doing some type of termite mitigation. We did have a company come in, and they did confirm that they're the subterranean type, which are the most difficult to deal with. And they do travel. And so what they're gonna be doing is giving us a quote for just that building, but also for the entire school site. That way, we can address the entire campus at once if it's something that's reasonably priced.
I'm just gonna quick remind us, since we are in the multipurpose room, that we have to use our microphones, not because, I know we're forgetting because we don't have an audience here, but it's actually for the recording. So, no, it's okay. I was, I was like, why are, why are tech people giving us the stink eye? It's because they need, they need the microphones for the recording. So thank you for that reminder, guys. All right, okay, sounds good. Thank you for that, thank you for that keeping us up to date and giving us a heads-up on what you're doing in case it needs to come back for some reason. So appreciate that. All right, we will move on to item E3, which is recommended appointment of Mr. John Baker as principal of White Hill School beginning in the 2022-2023 school year. Marcy?
Hi, thank you. And just want to give a quick overview of, whenever we do have a site administrator opening, part of our process is, along with recruitment, advertisement, and trying to get as many applicants as possible who are interested, we get feedback and input from our stakeholders. So the staff at White Hill, the parents and guardians, as well as our students, gave input on some questions that we asked them. What do they like about what's going on at White Hill? And they want to keep as we're looking forward to our next principal. What is going on that might just need to be tweaked? And what is not happening currently at White Hill that they would like to see? And then last but not least, not, last but not least, is what characteristics are they looking for in the next principal of White Hill? And we use that input to develop our questions and tasks. No interview is typically the same. There, we always have racial equity questions embedded within our interview processes and tasks, and we use the input for that. We also, for determining, there's typically multi-levels for a site administrator, even a district office administrator position. And we use the input from each of the interview panels to determine what do we do next in the interview process? What do we need to know more about? What do we want to learn more from each of our candidates? And so with that, we had a number of candidates start out with the interview processes, and we narrowed it down to two top candidates. And at that point, that's when I became involved in the interview process. And through the conversations and interviews, started to look, you know, wow, based on reflecting on the input that we had received from the stakeholders, as well as the interview panels, looking at, hmm, based on that input and what we're seeing, and what we're seeing in our top two candidates, maybe another pathway to look at is a co-principal model as opposed to the traditional principal and assistant principals. So I started to look into that a little bit and started to pursue that route with our two top candidates. And it looked very promising for a while. But one of the candidates is not moving forward with us, and we'll learn more about that later. But tonight, very excited to bring forward to you John Baker as the new principal of White Hill. John comes to us, as you'll see, I did an extensive board report here for you all to have. But a lot of teaching experience, English and social studies, middle and high schools, as well as middle and high school administrator. And he's, his focus is really working to ensure that, as his North Star, he says, is student success, and looking to ensure that all students have access and are successful. And he has been able to provide, as well as what was reiterated by, through reference checking, to corroborate that, is made some changes in one of his schools where he's been an administrator, to break down the racial equity barriers and provide more access to children at that school. So looking at everything we're looking for, and whenever we hire a new administrator, we don't look to just replace the position that was vacated, but we also look for somebody who's gonna bring new energy, new ideas to our leadership team. And so looking for an instructional leader, so really excited to bring John forward. If you do approve him this evening, he will begin on July 27th. And then he'll be up here, he's from Southern California. He'll be here to be introduced to you all at the August 2 meeting. And he does have a family, they're very excited to move. They've been wanting to live in Fairfax for a very long time. And this opportunity has prevented itself. And as much as we are sad to have lost Matt Katanzarit, we are looking forward to this addition to not only White Hill School and to continue moving what has been started there forward and continue to bring in an energy and new ideas to work with all of the stakeholders with the school and the district to move the school forward. With that, and he has two children, he has two kids. They'll be attending Manor School. And he'll be living in Fairfax with his wife, who's a psychologist. She'll be moving her practice up to Northern California. So looking forward to having the Bakers, not just John in our school, but also his whole family in our schools and our community. And John's very excited. He just didn't know that this opportunity, and it did come a little late with Matt's resignation. So it presented itself, and it has just worked out. So tonight, although we have some other news that I would like to share too, but that's not part of this agenda item, but we do have a resignation from Maria Lubomirsky, and, who has been the assistant principal at White Hill. And with, she was the other top candidate. And so moving forward with pursuing a co-principalship, John was very excited about that. It looked like it was gonna go for a while. Maria will be moving on to a position in another school in District Inmorene County. And we will, as we're advertising, now look for a co-principal. And to maximize our recruitment efforts, we'll also advertise for an assistant principal to see what we get. And then also, just because of our late date here, getting started with school starting, staff returning, some staff return as early as July 29th. And then the teachers come back on the 10th, is, and the kids come back on the 16th, is looking for an interim administrator, just to help us through until we can fill the position if one is needed. And so before us tonight is to approve the hiring of John Baker as the new principal for White Hill School. Any questions?
All righty. Any other questions? No? All right, and this is a action item, which requires a motion and a vote.
I'll move the recommendation of the hiring of John Baker.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so we'll do a vote. Wesley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley, aye. Rachel?
Aye.
All right, so moved.
When do we get to meet him? You, well, as soon, now he and I will be in communication, and we will start the outreach process to the White Hill community, as well as getting him up to speed and getting him on board. And I do want to also acknowledge and really thank and appreciate all of the folks who did participate in this selection process, from giving input to serving on interview panels, and also which helped us to arrive where we are this evening. And I really want to also acknowledge and appreciate Maria Lubomirsky and her time in Ross Valley, as well as Matt Katanzarits. They will certainly be missed. And, but as we must do, we must continue to move forward. So you'll meet John on August 2nd now. We'll be coming forward to become, and, you know, we'll let you know if you want to stop by and meet him. He'll start on July 27th, out at White Hill.
All right, so he's starting July 27th, then we'll meet him on our next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, on to item number four, which is the recommended approval of an MOU with UCSF Dyslexia Center for the 2022-2023 school year. And this is a discussion information and an action vote item.
Thank you, and I'll take care of this tonight. Eric Sable just returned from a vacation, so I told him he could have the evening off, and I'll do this one. So as you will all remember, you did approve this last school year, utilizing UCSF, or excuse me, contracting with UCSF to do their field test for universal dyslexia screener. And that occurred at Brookside and Way Thomas. They thought that through that year, that it might be ready to go at the end of the year. But what they learned, which is a good reason to do a field test, is that some English learners can exhibit a higher rate of false positives. So they've made some revisions to their screener, and we would like to again partner with them for a field test this year. They will be working with Manor and Brookside. Last year, they worked with Way Thomas and Brookside. And once finalized, the screener will become part of a larger integrated assessment intervention platform. And then, as you all know, one of our priorities in the district is multi-tiered system of support. And so the screener will become part of that, so we can earlier identify students and their potential needs with dyslexia and be able to give them the interventions that they need, so that they can be successful. So tonight, to please approve the pilot or the continued field test with UCSF.
Any, any questions? I know we've had this in front of us a couple of times, so just turned on. Okay. Otherwise, this is a, my only thing is, I think this is great. And once they've gone through this with us, I hope that we can share with our colleague districts, I mean, I love the idea of it being integrated into our MTSS and then being able to, with them as they roll it out, the fact that we kind of have been piloting this with them, I think is great and can be a resource for other districts as well for their, because I know everybody is involved in MTSS.
Yes, and also there's need to, a mandate to identify students early on. And so this is for TK through first grades. And so folks are looking at different dyslexia screener models. And we know that UCSF is very often on the forefront of anything that is cutting-edge and groundbreaking and research-based. And so, of course, yeah, that would be great.
So, this is an action item.
I'll recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding with UCSF Dyslexia Center.
We have a.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley, aye. Carry on and continue on with that process, it's great. All right, we are now on to item number five, which is the recommended approval of contract with Total Compensation Systems, Inc. to provide actuarial services for retiree health liabilities under GASB 74/75 for 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, and Chris Carson?
Thank you for the evening, the opportunity to discuss this evening the recommended approval of the contract with Total Compensation Systems, Inc. And this contract would be for two, two years in total. And what they will be doing is an actuarial study, which is required under GASB, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board, pronouncements 74 and 75, so that we can gather the information that is required in order to account for other post-employment benefits, which are the health and welfare costs for retirees that we have in the district, the future costs. And those, those future costs do need to be included within the financial statements. And we do have limited amounts of other post-employment benefits, but those that have been given to staff in the past must be accounted for in our current year financial statements. And also, any future potential liabilities are also looked at. And so they gather our current contracts and take a look at those types of things each and every year. And so year one would be a full actuarial study, and then year two would be a reduced amount of work. And they, they just update their information based upon the prior year actuarial study that they do. And so this evening, we're requesting that the governing board approve the contract for this service for the 21-22 and 22-23 school years. One additional note, this is the same company that we've used the last several years. We have not made any changes.
You just answered my question. Mind reader, mind reader.
Yeah, we did have another company that we were utilizing several years ago, but in about 2020, the gentleman who was in, the partner on the, in the firm, was involved in a traffic accident and passed away, unfortunately. And this particular firm stepped up and took the customers on at the contracted prices that we all had. And so this is just continuing the service with this particular firm. Because as that gentleman passed away, his other partner decided to go ahead and close the business.
And with that, I have no more questions. Anyone else have a question? All right, so, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the contract with Total Compensation Systems to prove actuarial services for 2022 and 2023.
I'll second the motion.
All right, second, and, or a motion and a second. Rachel?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley, aye. Carry on. Okay, then we have, that is our last presentation action item, and we are on to the consent actions. Does anyone have any question? Does anyone have any questions? Or I'm looking at my colleagues to see if there's any, any issues with the consent or anything that anybody feels needs to be pulled or a clarification question on any of those consent items? Six of them.
No questions.
Okay, hearing no questions. I will then again entertain a motion for our consent actions.
I'll move consent.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. So Wesley?
Aye.
And Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Consent is moved. On to board business for committee updates and reports from trustees. Do we have, is there any committee reports? Nope. I know it's summer, so a lot of times our committees kind of take some summer breaks. So I don't know if anyone has any. I'm looking around the room and I'm not seeing any.
My son did not get the afternoon bus.
That's your committee report?
That's my committee report. That's a quasi Jeepa report.
There, thank you, thank you so much for that.
He's very deep on the waitlist.
Okay, so that was our Jeepa report. Thank you very much. On to approval of special meeting minutes for June 23rd, 2022. Are there any edits or amendments to the minutes for June 23rd? Nope. All right, I'm not seeing, I'm looking around, I'm not seeing anybody jumping in here on anything. In which case I will entertain a motion for that.
I'll move approval of the June, the meeting of the special meeting of June 23, 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Wonderful. So our meeting minutes are approved. That is our board business. And now we were on to superintendent and cabinet report.
All right, well, we have two cabinetiers here this evening. Chris Carson, any other updates?
The only thing I do want to say is just reiterate what you did mention earlier, Marcy, related to the maintenance and operations staff. And all of that work that you saw earlier would not be happening if it wasn't for them. And so I just wanted to, to, I don't normally do that, but I do want to recognize that, all of the hard work. And our new director.
Thank you. All right, and just we're busy getting school ready for next year. The administrators start to come back next week. And then of course, the staff start to return. So we'll be well on our way into the 202223 school year before we know it. So with that, no other updates.
Microphone on there? Heed my own advice. So we are now on to the end of our meeting here with a meeting review, future board topics, board direction, any debrief before we have, before we adjourn. If there's any, my, my only question is, I know that we had talked about the future board meetings and having the budget come back to us. Do we have any idea of when that's coming, which board meeting that might be coming back to us?
It's a required 45-day revision, so it should be coming back at the next budget, or the, the next board meeting in August.
In August, okay, thanks.
And it's not a full-blown budget. You're not going to see the actual documents. It'll just be revisions and it'll be in like a spreadsheet form.
Got it.
With explanations as to what those major revisions are.
Got it. Thank you also for just staying on top of all that. This year has been a kind of a crazy roller coaster for budget information. So I very much appreciate you being on top of that. Thank you. Any other board, future board topics? We've got two meetings in August about the calendar. Do we need any?
Yeah, so we'll be coming back and taking a look at the board meeting calendar. So our two meetings in August are good, August 2nd and the 23rd. And so we'll be coming back in August 2nd to take a look. Because one of our trustees has a fantastic announcement, and that is Marie Onrio. Too bad she's not here tonight, so we could share this. Has, is now the new chief business official for the Miller Creek School District. And it just so happens that many of their meeting dates conflict with the Ross Valley School District, board meeting dates. And Marie really would love to stay on the board, does not want to drop off. And so therefore, if we could take a look at our board meeting dates and see if we can't make a tweak by even just keeping them maybe in the same week, but changing to a Wednesday or a Thursday, or just going on the opposite weeks. And Chris and I have talked and staff have no issues or concerns with, with that. So I'll just be sharing with you some other possible meeting dates coming back on August 2nd. And then likely getting those, if we can't do it on August 2nd, we'll be doing an approval of a revision to any meeting dates at the August 23rd meeting.
Okay. Any other? Nope, I'm looking around at my colleagues, around any other topics or anything for August that we want to have going. But I'm not seeing anything. As always, if something comes up, get in touch with Marcy or I, and we will add it to the agenda. We do our agenda planning a week before, on Tuesdays, so. All right, and with that, it is 9:13. And I will formally adjourn our meeting.